Hello, everyone. I'm Lorette Legan, President of the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Chamber membership and our Board of Directors, I want to thank you for joining us today for our Forum Onslow. The Chamber works with government agencies on issues that affect our business community. We monitor legislative issues that impact local businesses. We promote partnerships between business, government, military, and education. And we use these forums to create awareness on topics that are important to our entire community, such as the election of those that represent us on the state and local level. Our sponsor for this meet, the Candidates Forum, is the Jacksonville Board of Realtors. Speaking on behalf of our sponsor is Jared Patterson, President and CEO of the North Carolina Business Alliance for a Sound Economy. Mr. Patterson will also serve as our moderator for this forum. And our timekeeper is LaShay Kavers. Jared, it's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome. First, a brief message for you. In my capacity, leading the business alliance, I also serve as Governmental Affairs Director for the Jacksonville Board of Realtors, which represents over 1,000 Realtors who live and work in the diverse communities of greater Onslow County. Realtors adhere to a strict code of ethics. They are passionate about serving and supporting individuals and families as they pursue their dreams of owning or renting a home and as they navigate some of life's most significant financial decisions. Realtors are equally passionate about building strong, prosperous, and resilient communities, supporting an informed community, responsive government, regulatory efficiency, property rights, and a healthy balance of housing options. And for that reason, civic participation is a hallmark of the Realtor profession. On behalf of our CEO, Jamie Cooper; President Jeb Brown; President-elect Jamie Dorn; their fellow board and committee members; an incredible professional staff; and the more than 1,000 members of the Jacksonville Board of Realtors, I want to thank everyone here for taking an interest in your government. And now to the candidates. Here are the basic rules that we're going to follow for this forum. First, this is a forum and not a debate. You are asked to address the questions that are posed to you and to address the audience and not each other. All questions are general in nature, and they're suitable for all candidates. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer each question. We're going to alternate the order of the questioning. That's going to be the order of who answers first. And I'm also going to alternate which council seat is going to go first. Don't worry, I'm going to call your names so that we don't get lost. Please adhere to the time limits. When you see a yellow light, you're going to have 30 seconds to end your response. When you see the red light and hear the buzzer, your time is up, so please complete your sentence and we'll move on. At the end, we're going to have closing statements, and you're each going to have 60 seconds for that round as well. Candidates are seated in the order that they're going to appear on the ballot. All Jacksonville voters can vote for two at-large council seats. If you live in Ward 1 or 2, you will also be voting on a council seat for your ward. To the audience, I'm going to ask you to please refrain from any applause during the forum, except for right now, as we welcome the candidates for Jacksonville City Council. So we're going to begin with our opening remarks. You're going to have 60 seconds to introduce yourself, tell us about your background, your occupation, where you reside while you're running. We're going to begin with our at-large candidates, beginning with Cindy Edwards.
Good day, everyone, and welcome. First of all, thank you to the Chamber and our sponsors for providing this opportunity for all of us to be seen and heard by voters in our area. My name, as you heard, is Cindy Edwards. I have lived in Jacksonville. It's been my home of choice for 32 years. You'll never believe how I got here. I married this cute Marine. That was what did it. Yep. But in my capacity here, I have worked, I spent 10 years as a schoolteacher, then I've had 25 years in business. There was some overlap there. I started my business while I was still teaching. But I've been very blessed and fortunate to be involved in the community through a variety of organizations and boards and committees, through the Chamber, of course. I started with a small business committee in Governmental Affairs and ended up on the Board of Directors and was fortunate enough to chair that one year. And I was involved with the Arts Council and several other committees. And then eventually, one thing led to another, and I was asked last time if I would consider running for city council. And I said, "Well, give me the weekend to pray about it. Let me talk to my husband, and I'll get back to you." So by Monday or Tuesday, we had an answer. And I threw my hat in the ring and was fortunate enough to be elected. So happy to serve.
Very good. Thank you. Our next candidate is Amity Holland.
Hi, my name is Amity Holland, and like Cindy said, thank you for organizing this. I'm sure this was a lot of work to try to put together. I am, first and foremost, a mom. I have three boys that go to school here in Jacksonville. I also married a cute Marine. I think that's how a lot of us got here, or they were the cute Marine. I have experienced customer-facing jobs. Primarily, I worked as a photographer through Life Touch. So if it is something that has happened in a K-12 school and from New Bern to Leland, I've been there. So I stepped up for this role because I really love serving the community. I want to have something that my children can be proud of as they grow up here and something that they want to come back and visit me when they grow up. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Our next candidate is Michael Yanero.
My name is Michael Yanero, and I'm glad to be here. And I've spent four decades in public service, protecting families, building partnerships, and solving problems. Today, I'm not here as a retired police chief, but I'm here as a father, a neighbor, and a candidate for city council who believes Jacksonville's best days are ahead. Together, we can create a more safer, more collaborative, and more responsive to the needs of our children, our veterans, and our businesses. I serve on the One Place Board. I serve on the YMCA Board. I'm working with the Boys and Girls Club. I have a passion for children, and children are our future. And so if we're going to invest in our community, we have to invest in our children. So I've spent most of my career working to improve the lives of children so that we all can live a better life.
Very good. Thank you. We're now going to turn to our Ward 1 candidates, and we're going to begin with Brian Jackson.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. Again, my name is Brian H. Jackson. I'm actually, I'm from Jacksonville, North Carolina. Born, not born, but raised here. I was the product of a young lady that I got a chance to spend 13 incredible years as she lived when I returned back to Jacksonville. And my father was, like I said, in the Marine Corps. And we actually ended up in New Orleans, a whole nine months I was there, and I came back to Jacksonville until I graduated. I never thought I would return back to Jacksonville, but I'm thankful that I did. Not only did I serve in capacities prior to coming back, coming into city council, but I also served, actually, as a regular citizen, because that's where the most power does occur. I'm a prior Navy Electron Technician, and I'm just glad to be here.
Very good. Thank you. And now also for Ward 1 is Jerome Willingham.
Greetings. I'm thankful to the Chamber for the opportunity this morning. I'm a federal employee. I have degrees from Howard University in philosophy and law. I think I joined the Marine Corps to get a ride back to Jacksonville. So as a judge advocate, I was down stationed at Camp Lejeune for about 10 years. And my whole thing was being able to return to my community and bring the knowledge and the experience that I had back to the community. So I'm selling success, selling success as a military officer, selling success as a civil servant, and success as having served you for approximately 15 years in the past. My technique is consensus building, and I'll talk more about consensus building. Thank you.
Very good. That concludes our Ward 1 candidates. Turning now to Ward 2, we're going to begin with Brad Brown.
Hello, I'm Brad Brown. I just want to start, thank everyone who got this event, you know, set up and going. It's a great opportunity for us to be able to introduce ourselves and hopefully let everyone kind of get to know us. So I live here in Jacksonville, in Sharon Hills, with my wife and my daughter. We also have another child on the way, so God bless for that. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I was in for a little over seven years doing logistics and operational planning. Decided to stay here. Once we moved out here, my wife and I, we bought a house, decided to stay here in Jacksonville. And I decided to get involved and run for Ward 2 city council so I could get involved and be involved in the city that we live in and hopefully help make Jacksonville a better place through public safety, veteran support, and responsible city growth.
Very good. Thank you. Turning now to our next candidate for Ward 2, Fernando Schuffelbahn.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Fernando Schuffelbahn. I am running for Jacksonville City Council, Ward 2. I live in Sherwood Forest. My family and I have lived in Jacksonville for like 31 years, and we are active members of Tar Land and Baptist Church. We have one son, who's a professor at Coastal Carolina Community College; a daughter-in-law, who is a preschool teacher with the Onslow County School System; and I have two awesome grandkids. I have served in the Marine Corps for 22 years and civil service in base operations, Camp Lejeune, for another 17 years. I currently serve in the city's Beirut Memorial Advisory Board and the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. The reason I'm running for city council is that I want to give back to our community. I want to be a solution, not a problem. As your councilman, I'll be focusing on enriching our quality of life, and that encompasses economic development, public safety, and infrastructure. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And now finally, Miki Smith.
Hello, everyone. My name is Miki Smith, and I am stepping up to serve our community. I've been a resident of Jacksonville for 22 years. I reside in Jacksonville Commons, and I am a retired Marine as well, a local entrepreneur, a mentor to not only adults but children in our public school system. I've been married for 32 years to the cutest retired Marine here in Jacksonville. We have one son, who is currently an active-duty Marine officer, and he has a lovely wife, our daughter-in-law, and two beautiful grandchildren. I'm a graduate of Liberty University, where I received my Master of Arts degree in Theological Studies that helps me in my main profession and confession as a local pastor and servant leader. I'm a member of the Environmental Appearance Committee here for the city, as well as a board member of the Eastern Carolina Human Services Agency. I decided to run for city council because I believe that city council is the face of this caring community, this one city, your city, my city. And I want to be a part of that. I want to be one...
Great eyesight.
...to bring change.
Thank you. Thank you. We are going to begin our first question. We're going to begin with the Ward 1 candidates, and we're going to begin with Jerome Willingham. So, Mr. Willingham, here is your question, and this will be the same question for this entire round. What is the biggest challenge that is facing Jacksonville, and how do you propose to address it?
I would say the biggest challenge is developing our downtown. So I recently, the presentation on Uptown Jacksonville, and it's very impressive. But we have a beautiful waterfront, and the river can be a river or it can be a harbor. A harbor is the destination. A river takes you there. We need a harbor. We need a destination of downtown redevelopment that has alfresco dining, entertainment on the waterfront. And we started buying the property to accomplish this, sometimes years ago, with the Howard Johnson property, and never came through with the plan. We were very close the last time I was on council, working with Barbara Eichner, Paul Buchanan, and Jack Bright. We need to pick up that plan.
All right. Thank you. Same question now for Brian Jackson. What is the biggest challenge facing Jacksonville, and how do you propose to address it?
Our biggest challenge is actually housing, and it's housing for everybody. I think affordable housing has become a buzzword, where really HUD actually defines housing as 30% of one's income and everything included in housing, be it mortgage, be it utilities. We have already started working with partners to bring the community together. We're working with a consultant group to actually make that happen. One of the biggest issues we had here is the New River Center, Town Center, and we want to make sure that we don't have that issue going forward in terms of we're working out different ways of actually communicating with the ownership to try to make that move forward. But it's important that we keep on addressing that issue, homelessness. Our reentry program has actually kind of brought the group together to collaborate as we go ahead and actually work on mitigating the housing issue.
Very good. Thank you. We're now going to move to our Ward 2 candidates with the same question, and we're going to begin with Fernando Schuffelbahn. What is the biggest challenge facing Jacksonville, and how do you propose to address it?
Well, I feel one of our biggest challenges is the infrastructure. As we know, Jacksonville has been here for a very long time, and the staff we have are doing a great job in trying to fix all our infrastructure, our pipes, all that needs to make our quality of life a little better. So the benefit I have is the fact that I sit on that committee because I had a lot of questions on why, how things happen here in Jacksonville. And I've been educated quite a bit, and those great minds in there are working and trying to make our lives better, trying to get our infrastructure throughout the city. It's very costly, but they're doing a good job of trying to do that. So our plan, my plan, is to assist them in any way I can to get grants and get more funding to make this happen. Because we know that once we turn on the water faucet, it doesn't work, guess what? We're all in trouble. So they're doing their best, and they're doing a good job at it, and that'll be my focus for making the city better. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We're going to take the same question for Miki Smith.
Could you repeat the question, please?
The biggest challenge facing Jacksonville and how you propose to address it.
Great question. I believe that the biggest challenge that Jacksonville is facing is housing our homeless community, not just those who are homeless, but also those who are working homeless. They're working their 9 to 5, but yet still cannot afford the rental prices here locally. I believe that we can collaborate with those private and public entities to come together to find a solution, a viable solution, even if it means for temporary housing. We need to make sure that everyone has a safe place to live, a place where they can come home to, as well as keeping their families together.
Very good. Thank you. Same question. Final Ward 2 candidate in this round, Brad Brown.
I believe that the biggest challenge right now within Jacksonville would just honestly boil down to our economics, our city budget, where we're getting the money in, where we're putting it, and where it needs to go, kind of encompasses a lot of the issues already talked about, so not trying to just cheat that answer. But I think, you know, the city budget has been relatively stagnant for multiple years now. The city is growing in size, but not really growing in proper income, and that kind of falls into then, you know, the infrastructure, the housing. It's hard for the city to step in and do some of these things because the financial backing behind it isn't there. So dealing with that, one of my big-ticket items is responsible city growth. I'm hoping to be able to bring in maybe some other types of industry to help build up city revenue without just having to tax more people.
Very good. Thank you. We're now going to move to the at-large seat. We're going to begin this round with Amity Holland. Again, the question, the biggest challenge facing Jacksonville and how you propose to address it.
Once again, I feel like he said, "I'm not going to cheat the answer," but it is revenue. Everything is dependent on increasing our revenue. Fixing some of the homeless population issues are dependent on revenue. The infrastructure issues are dependent on revenue. We also are facing like medical infrastructure issues. We have a lot of professionals who have retired, but as a city, we're not attracting the new professionals to come in and take their place, leaving our community to have to go outside of it to find, you know, the doctors they need, to find, you know, whatever professional services they need. So it is going to be the money looking at ways that we can increase revenue for the city, ways that we can draw in more tourism dollars, and increase how people look at Jacksonville and wanting to stay here and to be a part of that growth. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We're going to move, same question for Michael Yanero.
Yeah, I think economic development and small business development is important. I think it's important when we talk about homelessness, when we talk about addiction, when we talk about building our community. You know, the average salary in Jacksonville is about $60,000 a year. The average salary in North Carolina is $70,000 a year. When you look at childcare for a small family, that's $22,000 a year you're paying. So if we really want to encourage and develop growth and make our community a better place, one of the things that we have to look at is how we're attracting small businesses. Small business is about 60% of the gross national product and about 60% of where people work. So having high-paying jobs and encouraging folks to open small business will allow us to solve some of the issues that we're facing.
Very good. Thank you. And then finally, Cindy Edwards.
I think the biggest problem or biggest challenge that Jacksonville faces is that we don't have just one challenge. All of the things that you've heard up and down this table are true, and we have to find ways to work on many things at one time. We have aging infrastructure, and right now, we're working on a $40 million sewer line. I don't think anybody would want to put $40 million in the ground, but we certainly want our toilets to flush and things to go where they should. Paving streets, about $1 million a mile. So all of these things take funding, as Amity said, but the challenge is balancing them. We cannot isolate one issue only and only fix one challenge and ignore the fact that we must continue to prepare for the growth that we have, the growth that is coming, our future, and the quality of life that we want for us and our children moving forward. So I think it's important that we balance this, that while we work on aging population challenges and housing instability in our area, which we're starting to address, the council has created a policy in the last year and a fund also to help with addressing some of these challenges. We also have to plan for the future and for the quality of life our citizens really want to experience here.
Very good. Thank you. We're going to move to our next question. We're going to begin this question with our Ward 2 candidates, and the first to go this round is going to be Miki Smith. I'm going to read the question one time. If you need me to repeat it again, just let me know. I'd be happy to do that. This is a little longer one. "Onslow County is experiencing a major housing shortage for both renters and buyers alike. Do you believe that Jacksonville should use its zoning plans and ordinances to make it easier to develop new housing? What is your position, and how would you address the housing shortage if elected?"
Answer to the first question would be yes. I believe that whatever measures that the city can use to address the housing issue should be used. Of course, that will factor into other things that are already in place, but we want to make sure that whatever is hindering our opportunity to provide housing is definitely done away with. I also believe that one way we can curb that is to find ourselves collaborating a little bit more with other cities and finding out what they're doing with their homeless population and housing issues. I do believe we have, down in Wilmington, the Eden Village, definitely a solution that has been made, but of course, it took private funding to help make that or bring that into fruition. So I believe that we need to consider collaborating with those who have additional funding to make it possible.
Thank you. The next to answer this question is going to be Brad Brown.
First off, I agree with Miki on collaborating with cities who are, you know, doing things right. It's always a good idea to go to someone who knows what's going on and get answers from the source. Past that, I mean, I know there are houses being built in Jacksonville. We are adding to the number of houses there, though I think the bigger topic with that would be affordable housing, making sure that it's available to anyone who is in need or anyone who wants to move here and, you know, settle down in Jacksonville like a lot of us did. So yes, using the city's zoning authority to be able to make that easier. How is, it's just, you know, figuring out what works and moving forward with it.
Thank you. Fernando Schuffelbahn.
Sure. I'm also in concurrence. The city definitely needs to bring more apartments, more housing, and everything. This is a growing city. It's grown tremendously since I got here in 1984. Unlike a lot, like in yesteryear, what used to happen is Marines would retire, since we've got the whole Camp Lejeune down here, they would retire and then they would go home. But Jacksonville's become such a great city that they're staying. Well, they're staying, that means the population is growing. Just alone, our Hispanic population's grown, and a lot of the folks are actually finding good places to live here. So we do need to build anymore. I know we have to worry about encroachment because obviously, city limits are city limits, but we can do better. We can get more affordable housing, as Brad was talking about, and we can work those things out because, again, we've got some good people working on these issues and true professionals have been to a lot of education to make the city grow and account for everyone and house everyone that stays. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We're now going to move to our at-large seat with the same question, beginning with Michael Yanero.
You know, affordable housing has declined roughly 40% over the past decade in the city of Jacksonville. 43% of our households are low to moderate income, and many are being priced out with rents and property value. And a lot of that population growth has been tied to Camp Lejeune, and the support industries have outpaced the housing supply. So I think we need to expand affordable and workforce housing and also respect our current communities. And there's a lot of ways we can do that. One of the things that we can do is start to use adaptive reuse and mixed-use conversions, just like we're talking about in the 400 acres. The other thing is partner with developers and Realtors and nonprofits to access tax credits so that we can focus on looking at the housing industry and encouraging people to provide quality housing.
Very good. Thank you.
Hold on. Time is... There we go.
All right. Cindy Edwards.
I would agree with what Michael just said. Public-private partnerships are key to this. We're not going to solve housing instability issues alone. The government doesn't want to be the landlord for everyone. It's not possible. It's not practical. It's not the right role for government. But we can be a partner in finding solutions. We can help with some land acquisitions, which we've done recently. We can help with structuring grants and supporting applications for grants. There are tax credits and things available, but it takes builders who are willing to step away from their maximum profit and do something for people profit, and we're finding those partners, but we need more of them because affordable housing and low-income housing is sorely lacking in this area, in the city and out of it, and we just need more than is there. So it's going to take public-private partnerships. It's going to take consistent effort, keeping it in the top of mind. It's been a priority for council, and we're keeping it as one simply because people matter, and this is a big issue with, you know, I recently attended a conference in Quantico related to our military communities as a host city, and the theme was "National Security Starts at Home." It really does.
Very good. Same question, Amity Holland.
So for the beginning of that question, yes, I think that approving things to help with the building is crucial, but I think that one of the things that would need to be looked at is that it's the right kind of housing. Approving things for blanket housing that is priced outside of what the community who is desperate for housing needs is not going to help the problem, and we're going to end up with overpriced homes that are sitting empty. We need to look at bringing in things that are going to match the income level of the average working person, not the average working person on Camp Lejeune, and those are vastly different. It is important that everyone is supported in this and that they have those options. We are also getting a huge influx in homelessness, and there needs to be some sort of transitioning with that housing as well. It is difficult to work when you don't have a home, and they need that landing place as well. And it is going to be all very dependent on income and finding people to work with. And it is going to be all very dependent on income and finding people to work with.
Very good, thank you. We're also going to now turn to our Ward One candidates, and this question is going to go first to Brian Jackson.
Repeat the question, please.
Yeah. Do you believe that Jacksonville should use its zoning plans and ordinances to make it easier to develop new housing? What is your position and how would you address the housing shortage if elected?
Ditto from everybody that already said. And yes, one of the things that we have started doing, like neighborhood improvement, has been actually creating options for affordable housing to actually take you through the process of making sure your budget is right. One thing that's been happening also is persons that had been using vouchers to be in Section Eight apartments, they could now use these vouchers to actually, for home buying. Another thing that we need to do is actually look at COTUS communities. Some call them tiny houses, but if COTUS communities, like it was mentioned before, it went down to Eden Village, and it showed a great concept, and it was actually privately done. Another thing we could look at is container houses. That's one thing that we can do. Like I said, again, we have to adjust the code, and we've been talking about it. Lastly, since I have no time, we're going to look at mixed-use housing and actually using 30% of that housing for low income. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And Jerome Willingham.
Thank you. I think the answer is infill development. Infill development is less expensive. You don't have to put in as much infrastructure, it's usually right around in the area. Infill development resulted, I think, in Riverwalk Landing, Laguna Bay on the waterfront, as well as the waterfront development in Collins Estates. So we have wonderful opportunities to do infill development. I think New River was a blown opportunity. I never would have invested in the millions of dollars in the woodlands in Williamsburg before I took care of the people in New River. It's good to feel people's pain. They came before city council, and I think they were abandoned.
Very good, thank you, sir. We are now going to move to our next question, and we're going to begin this question with our at-large seat. And the first for this question is going to be Cindy Edwards. We're going to talk about growth for a second here. Jacksonville and Onslow County are experiencing sustained population growth. What are the biggest pros and cons that come with growth, and what should the city's approach toward growth be?
That's a complex one. Pros and cons. Pros are the quality of people that we are attracting here. One of our greatest assets is the human capital we have in this community. We have a huge amount of volunteerism, lots of nonprofit work. People here care about other people, and they are able to put service over self, largely due to the military population and veterans that we have here, not exclusively, but largely. So people, great people are coming here, great people are staying here, and we're glad to have them. Challenges are the funding that's required for infrastructure. Every time you build a new neighborhood development, you have to extend water, you have to extend sewer, there's just roads, there's things that come with that. So there needs to be, you know, plans in place to help us grow sustainably and responsibly, but I'm glad to see us growing. I'm also glad to see us improving some things in the area of quality of life. You know, the recent updates to New Bridge and Rock the Block that we had, more of a focus on cultural arts and people coming together to celebrate who we are as a community and our diversity and the beauty that lives here is a great thing for the city. So not an easy answer to do in 60 seconds.
Very good. We're going to move to Amity Holland now.
Yeah, like she said, this is a hard one for one minute. It's very much the same, like, we're going to have growing pains. It's very difficult when we're growing and the city's playing catch-up to the population. It's going to be difficult. That being said, it's great that we're growing. When I first moved here, I realized how many people I knew who were prior Marines who were like, "Let me tell you about Jacksonville in the 80s." And they are blown away when they see Post Webout going out doing things like Rock the Block, and they're like, "I can't believe that's the same place." So it's amazing that we have grown that way, and it is amazing that we're going to bring the people into, that we can continue to grow like that. I'm a huge supporter in funding the arts. I think that bringing that in helps foster a sense of community, and when we bring in all of that growth with people, we are in a position that we can have those things and have a greater community in the city. I think that's about it.
Very good, thank you. Same question now to Michael Yanero.
You know, Jacksonville's potential is immense. With our military presence, entrepreneur spirit, and strategic location, I think we can build a more resilient community. And I think we need to focus on incentives for small business and local startups. I think that helps us develop the infrastructure and look at how we can bring sustainable economic development and foster new resources. Infrastructure improvements are expensive, but they support smart growth. I'm willing to explore options to increase the funding to repair city streets, as Charlotte and other communities have done in our community. And I think workforce development helps us prepare for our growing community. These priorities reflect my lifelong commitment to public service, safety, and opportunity. I think I bring the same energy and experience to the council because...
We've hit our time. Thank you. We're now going to move to our Ward One seat. Again, the biggest pros and cons that come with growth and what should be the city's approach toward growth? And we're going to begin this question with Jerome Willingham.
Thank you. I'm pro-growth. I was part of the council that annexed portions of Camp Lejeune, and we knew the growth was coming as a result of that. To the Georgetown community, I insisted that Georgetown be brought in the city limits if we were going to, as well as Picket Town, if we were going to annex Camp Lejeune. So the growth came. My concern is, where do we grow? Do we sprawl? Do we focus on infill development? Do we use our beautiful resources to center that development? And that's why I keep mentioning our downtown. Your downtown is your first impression, usually, of a town. And focusing on Court Street, we need to develop a plan to the waterfront.
Thank you, that's our time. Moving to Brian Jackson.
Read that question for me once.
You bet. The biggest pros and cons that come with growth, and what should be the city's approach toward growth?
Let's look at the challenges first. We are still trying to catch up when it comes to incomes. I always look at, we have three different segments. We have the retirees, we have the people connected to the base and veterans, and then we have everybody else, which a lot of times they're in service jobs. So we do need to approach, as we did with Project Frontier, to try to bring in higher-paying jobs, when we brought in Amazon. I'll look at the pros is that we are growing. We are keeping some of the folks that are coming off base, and they're staying, and also luring people that have actually visited here once or twice or just decided they're going to move down here. So we have a more diverse population as a result of that. We just got to continue to do what we need to do to support who we have. Also, we have, you know, just, I say, we're doing a great job bringing in other communities, and we just got to continue to build on our communities and mixed-use.
Very good, thank you. We're going to turn now to our Ward Two candidates, and the question is going to go first to Brad Brown.
I would say pros for the population growth is, I mean, pretty self-evident, our community is growing, our city is growing, which is a great thing to see. The cons that come along with that is, as was stated before, the economical constraints that we already have just get multiplied as you add more people into the community and into the city. So as for what the city should do, there's a lot of different avenues to go down. I think Ms. Cindy said earlier, you know, it's working on a whole bunch of things at the same time, but I'll still say it boils down to, you know, we need to bring in industries, career-oriented industries, more entrepreneurial opportunities, and have the actual, you know, living side of Jacksonville continue to grow so that the people living in it can do so comfortably.
Very good, thank you. We're going to take the question now to Fernando Shuffelbein.
Well, I'm all about, I'm all about growth. There's, of course, there's pros and cons to that, so what that means to me is the communication between the county and the city. They have to be unified because obviously somebody has to pick up the tab for all this, the growth that's coming up. This is a very veteran-oriented community, so there's a lot of help out there that can help develop this county or this city and county. Of course, if you're going to keep a lot of people here, and this city is growing, look what we're doing right now. With all the entertainment and everything that needs to keep these people busy, you need to keep them well-occupied. And we've got some good projects up in Williamsburg Plantation with the Upper Jacksonville Complex up there. You've got YMCA that's getting better. We need to be more helpful to the small businesses, which get the restrictions out of them so they can build their businesses. And that would allow them to better grow, and then the city will grow when they grow. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And then finally Mickey Smith.
Yes, sir. Growth is a great thing, and for us to say here in Jacksonville that we're experiencing that, we want to keep that going. We don't want it to halt, we don't want it to slow down. Therefore, it's going to cause for us to be more flexible and fluid in our decision-making and making sure that we are forward-thinking and anticipating those things that will cause for us to have to sit at the table and decide what we're going to do about that growth. I also encourage that, or I would also say that when it comes to the pros about it is that we get the opportunity to hear more examples or more ideas from the people on what we can do as a community to sustain our growth. Different ideas and more people at the table, I believe that's going to help us to be able to continue to grow as a city, even as a county, because our county is going to be affected as well.
Very good, thank you. And that concludes that round of questions. We're now going to move to our next question, and we are going to begin with our Ward One candidates. And the question is first going to go to Brian Jackson for this round. What do you think is the smartest decision that Jacksonville has made in the last 10 years and why?
Smartest decision that Jacksonville has made in the last 10 years? Let's start with, I think, one of the things that we did in neighborhood improvement is keep on pushing affordable housing. I think that's one of the smartest. I can't say, we have made some smart decisions. We have hired a new city manager within that period of time. We actually had, actually hired a new police chief to replace the, a great police chief to replace the great police chief we had before. We have become an all-American city since we've grown, we actually, we leaned into some of the issues we've been doing with reentry and actually finding jobs and creating possibilities of actually having bank accounts for those that were actually in the process of getting out. We also, we ended with that because we could no longer go anymore because of the time.
Very good.
Now you all got time to think.
The question now to Jerome Willingham. The smartest decision that Jacksonville's made in the last 10 years and why?
Okay, that's a hard decision to, hard question for me. I would say Richard, Dr. Richard Woodruff made such a powerful impact. So his tenure lasted to within the last 10 years, so I'm going to seize on the things that he did in his tenure that made us transformational. He came with the Clean and Green Program at a time when funding was disappearing from the HUD budget. And what he decided was, we're not going to deal with blight. We're going to demolish, and we'll have green. But the Affordable Housing Program was award-winning nationally, and it came out of that. Over.
Very good, thank you. We're going to take this question to our Ward Two candidates, and we're going to begin with Fernando Shuffelbein.
As I think back, 10 years is a long time, but the biggest thing that I've noticed being here is the emergency operation centers here in Jacksonville and the base. Working in base operations, it brought to light that it was never always that way, the communication between the city and the base. Well, in the past few years, several years, the cooperation between the base and the city has really come to, has really flourished, especially when we're dealing with hurricanes such as Florence and all these big major things. You need teamwork out there to make these things happen. It's not, you know, one side versus the other. We all remember the days of Court Street back in the day, back in the 80s. Well, look how much that's grown and gotten better. Look what's happening at the New Bridge Street, you know, Rock the Block and all that. I mean, the cooperation and everything's going well. Our first responders are essential to making all this happen, and that's what's come out of the past 10 years is, again, I go back to the cooperation between the base and the city. Thank you.
Very good. Mickey Smith.
Well, there's a lot of things that I have experienced over my time here in Jacksonville. In the past 10 years, when it comes to either the collaboration with the base and the city, I noticed that even with the committee that I'm working with now, the Environmental and Appearance Committee, is the restoration of our wetlands. For them to be able to take wastelands that are being affected by erosion and all of those other things, I believe that being able to take so much, being able to take our wetlands and be able to restore them in such a place to mitigate any effects, whereas our natural ecosystem has been affected, to be able to restore our oyster population. I believe that's been a great thing to happen, that maybe not something we can put our hands on right now, but in the long run, it's definitely going to pay dividends to our area.
Very good, thank you. We're now going to take this question to Brad Brown.
So I think I am at the most disadvantage here, as I have been in Jacksonville for the least amount of time compared to everyone here at the table. I will say, though, I was out at Camp Johnson doing training about nine years ago, and coming into Jacksonville at that time, from my perspective and from what I heard from a lot of people, there was a, there was a large divide between the military community and then the citizens of Jacksonville. It was very clear, you know, who was who and what wasn't, you know, mean to each other, but was, you know, there was a clear division there. And since coming back, I've noticed a lot less of that. So that, for one thing, is probably has to say for how the Marine Corps is teaching young Marines to act in town, but I think looking into what the city has done for the military community and the veteran community over these last 10 years, I would say that would be the smartest decisions and things that we should continue on.
Very good, thank you. We're going to now bring this question to our at-large candidates, and we're going to begin first with Amity Holland.
I don't have one specific thing, but something that is noticeable for me is that in the time that I have lived in Jacksonville has been noticeable improvement. The city has done a lot of revitalization, they have put a lot of care and effort into the growth and the way that the city looks. Things like the New Bridge renovation, even the aesthetics of the expressway, things like that that help grow us as a city and help the community with, you know, feeling, comfortable feeling like the... with, you know, feeling, comfortable feeling like that this is somewhere that cares about them and where they want to be. That revitalization is something that you have, can see, like physically see happening, and that is a culmination of a lot of different things that are going on. So that's a smart decision is that, you know, several smart decisions that have gone into making that happen.
Very good. Thank you. Michael Yanero.
You know, it's interesting. I haven't worked for the city for 20-some years. I think the most important thing that we've done over the last 20 years is create a vision, create a vision for what Jacksonville ought to look like. You know, when we talk about strategic growth and strategic approach toward things, we look at putting the sewer line down through Piney Green when they were developing that corridor so that the city can annex and grow. We looked at the 400 acres. All those things are looking to, as a vision for the future. And I think that's the, probably the most important thing that we've done over the last, over the tenure that I've worked for the city. And I think that's going to continue. As, as we look at the 400 acres and we see what potential that has, I think we need to look at, at continuing to be strategic and continuing to improve the quality of life of our community.
Very good. Thank you. And then finally, Cindy Edwards.
Last but not least. I think there's a, like many have said, there's several things that have been smart decisions. I think the results that we're seeing are evidence of that. But some of the, one might say unsexy things that happen in the background, I think, are the IGSA's, intergovernmental service agreements that we've had with the base and with other communities in our area, and public-private partnerships where we have sought out, instead of trying to be the solution and not be able to fund it, we've decided instead we're going to be a strong partner for community development, for planning, for economic development, for tourism. There's lots of ways that the city can be a strong community partner. And maybe we don't have all of the solutions or all of the funding, but by joining arms with other organizations, we've been able to make great strides. And I think a lot of the things that have been mentioned at this table are things that we've seen come out of those relationships. I think continuing to put that as a priority and be a good neighbor and a good partner in finding solutions for all of the challenges we face, whether it's, you know, economic development, infrastructure, housing stability, all of it. No one entity is going to be the be-all, end-all. There is no silver bullet, but we can be a strong community partner and we can continue to support solutions and work them toward the end goal line.
Very good. Thank you. That concludes this question. I'll let everyone know, we've got two questions left before our closing statements. We're going to begin this next question with our Ward Two candidates. And Mickey Smith, you're going to be first up. So here is your question. Public safety is a significant part of the city's budget. What are the greatest challenges that are facing public safety today in Jacksonville? And how would you address them as a member of the City Council?
I do apologize. I can't answer that right now. I do apologize. Hopefully you will be able to come back to me.
Okay. We're going to move to Brad Brown.
I would say probably one of the biggest challenges that I've seen and the people that I've talked to that's facing public safety is just that our, our police department, they do a great job. They're a bunch of great people. They are understaffed and severely underpaid. And when you do that, you have a retention problem, you have a morale problem, you have just problems that arise because you don't have the assets that you need there. So how to fix that, how to address that, looking through the budget, seeing if there's anything we can do to, to alter, maybe either pay our officers more, be able to hire more, increase certain types of benefits that we can that maybe don't have as much financial impact. I've had the idea of, of even a Jacksonville PD, like, reserve unit where they're, they're only paid for the, you know, events or whatever that they do. They're not on a full-time salary, something to be able to just bring the PD up to a more equitable level.
Great. Thank you. And we're going to take the question now to Fernando Schuffelbein.
Sir, public safety, very important. And every time I think about safety in the city, I think about what wife and I traveling to other cities. And if we notice that that city is not safe to be in, guess what we do? We go around it. Well, we don't want that in Jacksonville. We want people to come and visit us. We want people to enjoy what we have here and what we offer here. And who makes that happen? Our first responders. We out, you know, the police chief, Chief Phelps, and Captain Tio there, they're doing a phenomenal job. We've got a lot of experience in there and they're doing an awesome job keeping everyone safe and keeping everyone that when things start, they're, they're on it. Our investigators, all the people that run those departments are phenomenal. They have, a lot of them are retired military, a lot of them have gotten further education, and they're very smart people. And not just taking somebody off the block, but keeping this city safe means tourism, means people are going to come here and enjoy what we have. And that makes our job a little harder now because those people visiting, we have to give them something to do. Thank you.
Very good. We are going to take the question now to our at-large candidates. And we're going to begin with Michael Yanero.
You know, I've spent four decades as a police officer in different communities. And one of the things I think that's important is that Sir Robert Peel said that the, the most important indicator of a, of a, of a community is prevention of crime. And I think that's what we need to focus on. I often said to Reverend Churchwell, he said that he was trying to get me out of a job when I was the police chief. And I think that's the important part is, as we start to look at how we, how we address issues with our children, you know, they're the, they're our most, our most important asset. The first 2,000 days are the most important in a child's life. And so if we're really going to prevent crime and then we're really going to impact public safety, then we have to focus on our children, the, the first 2,000 days. And I think that's the way that we make our community safer.
Thank you. Cindy Edwards.
Could you repeat the question? I was dealing with a table wardrobe malfunction.
What are the greatest challenges that are facing public safety today in Jacksonville? And how would you address them?
Greatest challenges? Well, first of all, public safety includes our fire department. And I got to give them props because they have an ISO rating of one, I believe. That is amazing, which helps. All of us are an insurance rate, so we're very thankful for the job that they do. Thanks, Chief T and team. As far as the police department, props to Chief Phelps. He has been doing a lot to work on morale and the troops and also moving away from some older technologies to body cams and some things that are newer. So we're seeing strides being made. I think it's already been mentioned that, you know, they, they could use some more officers and we could definitely, you know, see them be a little happier with their pay. Those are things that we have, we made some big chunks of advancement on those about three years ago. I was part of that decision to really readjust all of the pay scales. So we stopped everybody, you know, jumping off the ship as fast as they could. It slowed down a whole lot. Most people are staying. Some have come back. But we still need to do better. So it's going to be a constant thing. We have to keep it, you know, keep pushing on that one until we get where we need to be. And of course, that depends on budget and decisions. But like I said, you know, it's never one issue.
Very good. Thank you. Amity Holland.
So it is multi-tiered. There's, you know, EMS, fire, police, police. It's something we hear a lot is retention is an issue. There are a lot of surrounding communities. If you drive through any neighborhood in Jacksonville, you're going to see sheriff's cars and police cars for every community surrounding us. They love it here, but they're not finding a reason to stay as far as employment. I know that the city has tried to address that. They have talked to people. They've done surveys. I think it's very important to bring them to the table to tell us what they want because it might not necessarily be just pay. It's the same with fire is making sure that, you know, our firefighters are taken care of as well, our EMS. Everyone, you know, needs to have job satisfaction. It's the most stressful job I could imagine. Well, I honestly could not imagine doing those jobs. That's, you know, that's crazy to put that yourself into that position every day. Sometimes it's thankless and they should be supported. They should have the equipment they need. They should have what they need to have work-life quality balance.
Very good. Thank you. We're now going to move now to our Ward One candidates. And the first to address this question is Jerome Willingham.
The biggest challenge, in my opinion, is community policing. How is it done? Is it done right? I was part of litigation that challenged, successfully challenged how we were policing our communities. I think the result of that was better policing. We eventually got new leadership and a outstanding police department. But it's community policing. When I was young, youth, we had Joe Brackeen. We called him Tiny. He was from our community. Our church, St. Julia AMZion Church, our pastor was a police officer. So what's the climate? What's the climate in service delivery? What's the climate in the people that you're serving? Building that gets a, a good relationship. And that's the result of good community policing. I think if we get that right, we're good.
Very good. Thank you. Brian Jackson.
Give me the question again, please.
You bet. The greatest challenges that are facing public safety today in Jacksonville? And how would you address them?
Greatest challenges? In Jacksonville, it's always pay because we need to lure great candidates to become police officers in, in our, for JPD. But also, we're losing a lot of seasoned officers. And maybe what we can do is start reaching out to other communities or, you know, to, to try to actually bring in officers that might just like this area, you know, just make sure we, we get the word out about how great Jacksonville is. And one of the things that I talked to current Chief Phelps about is what we can't do in pay, we might could do in giving time off, you know, or adding, adding to the personal days as we go forward. But we have to look at other options if pay doesn't work. Also, as I said, we need to increase community policing. We do things like pancakes with police and coffee with the cops, which build relationships with the community.
Very good. Thank you. We are now moving to our final round of substantive questions before we, before we move to our closing statements. We are going to begin this round with our at-large candidates. And the first candidate for this question is going to be Cindy Edwards. And hopefully I saved a fun one for last. If the city of Jacksonville were to receive a $10 million grant and you could use it any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
That number used to sound so big.
Yeah.
Let's see, one-fourth of a sewer line. $10 million grant. I would probably, given my, when I ran last time, I ran on the promise of Jacksonville deserves more. And I feel like in the role I've played, I haven't solved everything, but I've been able to be a part of some solutions starting in that direction. I want to see that work finished. So I would probably focus it on quality of life measures for our citizens. And that may mean different things to different people. But we need, you know, cultural arts and tourism, entertainment things in this community as well as, you know, supporting festivals and things that we do where we can come together and just celebrate who we are and who lives here and the fact that we have a beautiful community. So for me, it would probably be quality of life focused. We're working on several things right now that are a lot more than $10 million, but, you know, heading in that direction.
Very good. Thank you. We're now going to take the question to Amity Holland.
Yeah, that's, I would like to assume that a lot of other things are taken care of before I can just spend $10 million however I want. And I think a lot of it would be quality of life. Something that is a personal thing for me is that I would want to give a chunk of it to our animal shelter. We have a huge problem with stray pets in the city. I have a feral kitten in my bathroom right now that I caught and brought in because of the rain this weekend. The shelter has a trap neuter release program, but it's already maxed out its budget for the year. So being able to add something to that and help take care of that often overlooked population was something that would be dear to me. And then also revitalizing our Arts Council. They have a lot of great outreach programs like with Arts for Veterans and, you know, helping the community through the arts that I don't want us to lose. And they could use some of that funding as well. And it would help them do things for the community.
Very good. Thank you. Michael Yanero.
That's an interesting question. But I think we need to be really strategic about it. So, so what I would look at is how can we, how can we impact the lives of our children? You know, we're talking about opening a Boys and Girls Club and making sure that we have after-school care. How do we, how do we, how do we improve the lives of our children? The second thing I think is that we need to focus on economic development. How do we, how do we encourage businesses? Because once the $10 million is gone, it's gone. And so what we want to do is, if we're going to use that kind of investment, we want to make it sustainable. And the way to make it sustainable is to look at enterprise zones, to look at community development revitalization zones that improve the ability for people to open small businesses because that's the backbone of our community.
Very good. Thank you. We're going to now move to our Ward One candidates with this question. And we'll begin with Brian Jackson.
Ask the question one more time, please.
The city of Jacksonville is going to receive a $10 million grant and you get to use it any way you want. What would you do with it and why?
Want to cheat off everybody's paper and... My, my main thing would be housing and really transitional housing to mixed-use housing. Because one thing, people got to understand that homelessness is not a cause, it's an effect. So we need to actually work with our nonprofits to help them fund what they do best. That's how we can help the greater community. Utilize private partnerships, private-public partnerships to build on things that we need. And like I said, housing is, is huge. If we can get people housed and actually find jobs for them to work after dealing with, if there's mental health issues, medical issues, whatever issues that we do within as, have that hub and that will to other nonprofits, then we can also have sustained workers that can actually provide tax money to our, our community.
Thank you. And now the question for Jerome Willingham.
I would come back to downtown redevelopment. I would close two blocks on Court Street. I would extend the landscaping that we have in Riverwalk Crossing. Putting amenities in an area can be the catalyst. It can be what the city needs for development. It worked for Riverwalk Crossing, which begot Riverwalk Landing. And it begot luxury homes as well as affordable housing. And we used to brag about our affordable housing because two people theoretically making minimum wage could afford one of those beautiful homes. So if we invest in Court Street and the result is alfresco dining in the street area that we've converted, and we have a lot of diverse small businesses, restaurants. We talk about town centers. We want to copy Mayfair from Wilmington. We talk in Uptown. Town, we have the natural components for a town center and a walkable community now. Let's develop it.
Very good. Thank you. We're now going to move to our Ward Two candidates with this question, beginning with Brad Brown.
So immediately after hearing the question, my mind goes two places. One, already been stated, affordable housing, whether it be small houses themselves or, or a complex of apartments of sorts that, that the city can build and funded to get there. That way we can help the homeless community. As well as, since the last question was public safety and the big thing was pay for police officers, you know, bolstering that budget there. That being said, though, I think $10 million, as it was said, sounds like a lot, doesn't actually go that far nowadays. And so there's a lot of research and a lot of thought that needs to go into where that can be best applied to invest into the city where it needs to best that I don't think a minute I could give you the best answer.
Very good. Thank you. Fernando Schuffelbein.
Same thing as Brad. You start thinking $10 million doesn't go very far, especially when you start dealing with infrastructure. with infrastructure. But you want to split, you want to split the cost. You want to share in the wealth. And a safe city is a welcoming city, is a prosperous city. That means if you get more, if you invest in the police officers and you invest in our first responders to make this an attractive city to be, to come and visit, the money will be spent here. And once that money gets spent here, then you can invest on public safety, and you can invest in, especially what Chief was saying over there, the, having additional police officers in schools. We have a lot of veterans that are more than qualified to stand those posts in those schools to make those kids safer. And enriching all our veteran communities to make them more prosperous, because they bring in a lot of money to help the students and help everyone in the community to make their lives a lot better. So between everything that's going on with the Lejeune Memorial Gardens and the Carolina Museum of the Marines, those are very attractive venues that people would come and visit.
Very good, thank you. And now to Mickey Smith.
Yes, sir, enjoying everyone's answering and concurring, but I think when it comes to that large amount of money, which to some it may not be, because you're working with a lot more, I would look and consider using that money for upgrading and revitalizing the aging and somewhat forgotten communities here in Jacksonville, where we're talking about Bryn Mawr, Belfort, Georgetown, and revitalizing those communities and bringing them up to where other communities are. Along with that, going back to the safety, the public safety question, I would definitely invest in those in-kind projects that we could incentivize our public safety individuals with, when it comes to the fact that we can't, we may not be able to pay them much more, but we could have some in-kind incentives that we can provide with that $10 million to keep those that we've trained, instead of losing them to other cities.
Very good, thank you. We're now going to begin with our closing remarks. You're going to have 60 seconds for these closing remarks, and we are going to begin with our Ward One candidates for the closing remarks. And the first up for this is Jerome Willingham.
Thanks, everybody, for attending, and I want to recognize my co-campaign manager, Darius Mitchell. Thanks for all his work. My daughter Tiffany is also a co-campaign manager. I'd like to talk to Camp Lejeune. Camp Lejeune is often criticized by not participating, and I think there are things that they need to hear so that it would encourage their participation. We're a host city, and we have one of the greatest economies in eastern North Carolina. We, let me talk about how we can improve and be a better host city. The sales tax. Sales tax distribution is unfair. North Topsoil gets about $800 per person. We get 200. The last thing I wanted to mention, because I'm running out of time, is that we need somebody who's going to defend the nonpartisan election system that we have here. It allows people like me who work in the federal government to participate, and it's like the last one in Onslow County that we have where we can, government employees. So you've got something to vote for, Camp Lejeune.
Thank you. Closing statement now, Brian Jackson.
I love the direction we started going in, our different visions concerning housing, concerning quality of life, concerning luring greater-paying jobs. I want to continue to be a part of it. We have done, I believe this council currently have done a great job, and I want to be a part of the forward movement. I do want to find a way to start educating our public on what we can do and what we can't do and what we can assist. A lot of times, government, people think government can help them in certain issues, and you don't want government to help you in certain issues. They might, they might want to get funds from government to the other agencies to assist in that, but we got to continue working on our public-private partnerships, not only for our recreation, quality of life, but also to build stronger communities.
Very good, thank you. We're now going to move to our Ward Two candidates for their closing statements, and we're going to begin with Fernando Scheffelbein.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank, thank you for joining us this morning. Your attention shows that we care about the future of our community. This is why I'm running for city council. I believe you deserve a representative that listens, works hard, and puts you first. For those who, for those of you who know me, you know I'm very mission-oriented. Mission accomplishment is foremost on my agenda. Like many of you, I want this place, I want this city to be a place where families are secure, where our military men and women, when deployed, know that their families are being taken care of, where we can all prosper from a growing city, and where we can all enjoy a better way of life. If elected, I will be your representative in every decision made. I will be accessible to address your concerns, and I will not forget that my role as a councilman is to serve you. This is all about teamwork. We must come together and make this a city stronger and safer for everyone. I'd be honored to earn your trust, your support, and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, closing statement from Mickey Smith.
I'm here before you today, not just as a candidate, but as a servant. I'm called to listen. I remain teachable, and I lead this community with intention and integrity. War II is more than just a district on a map. It's home. It's where veterans are served, have served with honor, and families have built legacies, and our faith communities have lifted each other up throughout every season. I believe in Jacksonville, and I believe that every voice matters. I believe that infrastructure here can meet innovation. I believe that economic mobility can ignite growth. I also believe that having a robust housing system could keep families together. Collaboration could find viable solutions, and I believe in the genuine concern of each and every citizen. I believe in making sure that they understand what our responsibilities are, so that they can fully understand their responsibilities as citizens. Above all, I believe in us. I believe that we can act justly, we can love mercy, and I, out of time. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And now to Brad Brown for your closing statement.
I want to start with making just one point very clear. I'm not specifically sitting here to get elected to be a part of city council. What I want is for the best candidate in each of these races going on to be elected, the person that can do the best work for Jacksonville and make it a better place. Second to that, I do hope I am that person for Ward Two. I hope the ideas that I've talked about here are good and will help. I've also written down some from the other candidates here that they've said that I thought were really good ideas that I would also like to pursue. But just in closing, I just, I want to, like I said when I started, I want to get involved. I want to be involved, whether that's on the city council, makes decision-making a little easier, or at least the conversation starting easier. But even if not, I am committed to being involved in this city and in this community and pushing forward ideas that will help it.
Very good, thank you. Now we're going to move to our at-large seats, and the closing statements will begin with Amity Holland.
I recently got to chaperone a field trip with my kid's school to the Onslow County Museum, and I learned way more about Onslow County than I realized there was to learn. But with that, I learned about the history of Jacksonville. We have always been a diverse community. We have always had groups of people coming in from different parts of the world, different parts of the country, different faiths, different beliefs, and we have created something very unique and special here that has tremendous opportunity for growth, has tremendous opportunity for strong community and business, and that is something that I want to see happen and that I would like to help carry forward. We are an amazing place to be, and we're seeing that with the amount of people that are deciding to stay here. When we did have an influx of people that would get out and go home, they're choosing Jacksonville. I want to choose Jacksonville. I hope that you vote for me. Otherwise, I hope you vote for whoever you feel is the best qualified, and we can carry that through together no matter what.
Thank you. And now, closing statement from Michael Yanero.
You know, after more than four decades of public service, from a paramedic to the police chief to the city's first public safety director, I'm running for city council to continue serving the community I love in a new way. Jacksonville is growing, evolving, and facing complex challenges. I believe our city deserves experienced, steady leadership rooted in integrity, transparency, and a deep understanding of public safety, community engagement, and strategic planning. I believe in responsive, accountable government that listens to the citizens and acts in their best interests. I spent my career building trust between law enforcement and neighborhoods, between agencies and families, between government and the people it serves. I want to ensure smart, sustainable growth that supports military families, strengthens small businesses, and protects our quality of life. I've built a strong, respectful relationship with our military leadership, relationships grounded in mutual support and shared purpose.
Good time, thank you. And then finally, closing statement from Cindy Edwards.
Thank you to everyone for being here today and for watching online. Please do go vote. Local municipal elections have a traditionally low turnout, and we would love to see more involvement from our community. And then after you vote, stay involved. Email, call, text, get up with your representatives. Let us hear from you. Come to public comment meetings and places where you can share your thoughts and ideas. No matter how capable, or smart, or intelligent, or common sense oriented you your elected officials are, no one person has all the answers, and the smaller the group, the narrower the chances are of a great solution being found. So we need your voice at the table. We need you to participate. I ask for your vote, obviously, because I would love to keep the seat that I have, and I would love to keep serving our city. I've been serving as a teacher, and then as a business owner, and then as a volunteer, and now I'm here. I believe this is where I'm supposed to be, and I will continue to serve as long as God and the people let me. But do vote, please.
Very good, thank you. That concludes our candidate questions and our statements. I want to give a big thank you to the candidates for a civil and substantive forum. And as we turn this back over to Lorette Legan, president of the Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber of Commerce, I want to invite the audience to express their gratitude to our candidates with a round of applause.[1707.66][1707.66](APPLAUSE)
Well, between Cindy and Jared, I don't have a whole lot to say, because they took most of my speech right here. So again, yes, thank you for joining us. Thank you for your decorum. It's very much appreciated. We appreciate the city of Jacksonville allowing us to use these facilities. Thank you to the Jacksonville Board of Realtors for hosting this event and LaChee. Jared, thank you so much for keeping them all in line.[1741.12][1741.12](LAUGHTER) Now, if you missed any part of the forum, just check the listings on G10 for the rebroadcast dates and times. And remember, your vote is your voice and matters important to the city of Jacksonville. Absentee ballot request forms are available online at Onslow County Board of Elections' website, as well as the dates and times for early one-stop voting, which will all be held at the Onslow County Boards of Election office. Election date is November 4th, 6:30 a.m., 7:30 p.m. at your local precinct. On behalf of the Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber of Commerce, thank you for joining us, and this concludes our program.